Welcome to Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for July the 12th, 2021. We appreciate your attendance or viewing or reviewing. With that, we will have a pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Ronnie if he'll be our invitation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We pray that you'd be with us tonight, guide us, direct us, give us wisdom as we conduct the town's business. We give you the praise and the glory and the honor. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council members, you have received the minutes for the June 28th, 2021 Town Council meeting. Are there any changes, deletions?
Move to approve?
Have motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions? None? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the Town of Fort Mill may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside the council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone for the public comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. I do not see any presentations on our agenda, so we will move to old business item number one. First reading. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number 6530000210, containing approximately 7.30 plus or minus acres located in the southwest corner of Pleasant Road and Whitley Road. This is in Ward 2, which is Ronnie Hounds, and Penelope is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Old Business Item Number One. So?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Penelope, this is our first reading, but it's an old business item.
Yes, ma'am. This is basically an annexation for the seven acres off of the corner of Pleasant Road and Whitley Road. This annexation is, you know, the seven acres, and they are proposed in age-restricted units for that development. And so this is one of two parts. This is the annexation, and later we have the actual development conditions for the MXU.
Okay. And for those that will be watching this on rewind, this is the area off of Pleasant and Whitley that initially had had proposal for regular residential. Then it was delayed twice, and they've come back and are looking at age-restricted development on this property. Is that correct?
That is correct. And just for the record, those two dates that we did have the public hearing meetings were made sense in June 14th, where we allowed the citizens, about a half a dozen of them, to speak for this annexation zoning. So that was held properly.
I think that's very important. On May 10th and June 14th, we did allow for our public comments, citizens that lived in the county area of Fort Mill, an opportunity to present themselves and their opinions before us on this topic. Okay. Discussion. The motion is to approve the annexation of this property.
Last time, and just for, for the whole year, so it was multifamily housing, right? Kids could be allowed. That was what originally was proposed?
Originally, it was just, there was no age restricted. So there was not a limit. There could have been children, not age restricted, to 55 and over.
Okay.
And what is it currently zoned, for those listening in?
In agriculture.
It's in the county, but yes, agriculture.
So only farming? I know this is, it's a different jurisdiction. Is that what that typically?
It is.
Among other things.
It is basically like one acre dwelling unit for the, for the single-family development that they have for the county. It allows some, you know, they allow farming, religious uses, manufactured homes, and some other uses of the county for that agricultural district.
Thank you. So to be mindful, this particular item, old business, is to annex that property. The following item is in relation to a development agreement on that particular piece of property. And I think for historical context, for, again, those that will be watching this later, this came before us in 2018 and did not pass. Further question or comment?
How many dwelling houses are we talking about, as we know at this time?
Approximately 66 age-restricted.
Okay, now, let me clarify that too, because I was just asking that question earlier. This is seven acres. The seven acres does not consist of 66?
That is correct. The portion to the south has been already, about 21 units are already entitled to the south. That is part of the Pleasant Vista MXU that goes across where the school is, the Cooper Willis property. So they are combining this property with a small portion on that side of the road. So that is correct. The total is 66 age-restricted, but they do have an already permitted allowance on the southern side.
So how many? How many on this seven acres?
That would be 45 of the remaining 66.
That's correct.
Now, if we were to approve it, what assurances would we have in the development agreement that those 21 would revert to age-restricted?
Well, it's, it's in the development conditions. I see what you're saying for the Pleasant Vista. That is, no.
It's a separate entitlement, so there would be none. If that property owner wanted to come through and amend what's already approved to restricted to age-restricted.
To Councilman Hounds's point, these two are conjoined. And as we look at the overall decision to develop it, should it happen, I, I need to know, you know, what the particulars would be. So as it sits today, correct me if I'm wrong, but as it sits today, 21 units are already approved.
Entitled.
Entitled with the previous development. The annexation request, it's for seven additional acres aligned with that, and 45 homes that would be age-restricted.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay? Does everybody get that?
So just the 45, 45 houses would be age-restricted?
Well, I think because they said 66, there's some thinking that it would all be age-restricted. But I just want to make sure if we were to move in that direction, I want some assurance.
And like we stated, I mean, that to have that extra assurance on the already entitled is talking with Cooper Willis, or to amend it, to put that language in age-restricted. The intent of this developer is already in the document for the age-restricted, for the 45. But yes, you are correct, Mr. Hounds, the 21, you know, they're saying age-restricted, but at this time, it could be something else.
So, so why does the document not say 45 if they didn't purchase, the developer didn't purchase the property to combine those two together for a development request of the full acreage for 66 units? Because if we move forward and said yes, we're saying yes to seven acres and 66 units, essentially, aren't we?
It's capping, capping the density at six units per acre.
It's seven acres.
Mayor, there's multiple ways we, this could have happened. We could have brought forth an amendment, I guess, of the already entitled piece to add this to that, but there's multiple ways to slice this, I guess. The way currently does, you know, have some cons in that it makes it confusing because we're adding one entitlement to an already existing entitlement. But should this go forward to second reading, we will work diligently to tighten up the language to make sure that it is clear that there's the 45 and the whatever number of units.
You understand my question?
Oh, yeah.
Because we're kind of taking a lot of liberty, thinking that even the Cooper's property is, has anything to do with these people at all. I mean, are they even talking to one another?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
I've noticed on Netflix, everything I watch, when people are thinking, they go, hm, hm, don't practice them. Well, Council, the motion on the table is to approve, and we have a second. Is there further discussion that needs to be?
I got one. If we approve the annexation, then that goes to our tax rate. But if we don't approve the development plan, then it still stays in the city, correct?
Stays in the county.
Stays in the county.
Yeah. Let's, let's be clear. This is a request for annexation of the seven acres into the town from currently held by the county acreage.
That is correct.
Okay?
That answers your question. I assume if the council were to vote on the annexation, approving the annexation, but deny the development plan, then all likelihood, the property owner would, would withdraw their annexation request to not bring it into the town because the development plan is bad.
Do they do that?
Yes, absolutely. There's no developer would want to buy it if they couldn't develop it.
Yeah. And the property owner is, is that Mr. Atkins? Yes.
That's public record, yes.
Yes, yes, and not, yeah. William R. Atkins.
Okay, is everybody on the same page? Hmm? Any further questions? Hearing none, I must call for the vote. All those in favor to approve Old Business Item Number One, please, by show of hand, say yes.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Now, we will move to Old Business Item Number Two. First reading. An ordinance adopting a mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant Whitley MXU project, Ward 2, Ronnie Hounds, and Penelope again is our expert. Because we just said no on first reading, we will have another reading if we say no?
No.
Okay. So this is done?
No, ma'am, you would need to vote on this.
We still have to vote on this?
What I meant to say is, first one is done.
Just making sure.
Yes.
Okay. So, do I have a motion on the development conditions and concept plan in Old Business Item Number Two?
Make a motion, accept Old Business Item Number Two.
Second.
I have a, accept and a second. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none?
I would like to say something.
Okay.
I don't know what everybody's mindset is, and, I mean, everybody votes in their own direction, but this property's going to get developed, one way or the other. Either we are in control of it, or somebody else is in control of it. It doesn't, it's inevitable. I don't know if Cooper Willis is going to come back. He might buy it out and add it on to his. I, I don't know. But, and I'm not for this project, but I am for the, what the work that they've done to this thing. They have promised to widen the road, widen the intersection, put in sidewalks, put in signage, expand the, the crosswalk where unfortunately that poor young boy was killed. I don't think we could have asked for a better developer to come in and want to build in our community. And I guess I'm referring to conversations that I've had prior where it seems like we are shooting from the hip, but I, I am truly remiss if we would have somebody like, who would put the work of this in and then run them out of town, and then have some knucklehead come in and, as we've all been privy to and are guilty of when it happened over there at the top of Dobie's, and we were sold the bill of goods, and it went, you know, six different ways to Sideway, to Sunday, and we got nothing that we were promised on there. I don't know where to start, or where it needs to be at when we start hearing about things like this. But I, I would rather, and I'm sorry if I'm rambling, I'm, I'm trying to formulate the thought, I would rather cultivate a relationship with developers like this and encourage them to come into the area than all these big box guys who don't really care about the community or their impact and what they have. They're just all about the bottom line. I don't really know if that had to do with what we had to say, but I just felt that that was important.
I think it's important too, because this is a conversation I've attempted to have several times recently. I have mentioned more than once since our denial of the project down on Dobie's. I find it very difficult for me that we can have quality developers come in, spend the money, spend the time, think they've checked every block, think they've done everything we ask of them, and then we turn them down. And I know the process doesn't provide that it's an automatic yes if you check all the blocks. I get that. I think they get that. But I'd, I'd like to see us put some speed bumps into place so that there's something that says, this isn't likely, don't spend the money. Because I think it's unfair. I think it's terribly unfair. To your point, however, we deny annexation, they have to get that approval through the county.
And I agree, 100%. But, and as you just said, you, you kind of touched where I was going, I don't know if it starts in the whole planning process, when they come in front of the plan review board. I knew how it used to be, where they would come in here and they would check whatever boxes that they were kind of, hey, make sure you do this, hey, make sure this happens. And then they sit there in front of the council and they think they're going to be automatically approved. That is not how it happens, nor was it how it happens. But maybe, and I don't know criteria that we have to put in front of the board before it even reaches us and say, it's just not going to fly. I'm sorry, the town is not ready for this right now, or this area is not ready for this right now. We love your work. We want you to be here. Is there somewhere else that you can get in and do said project?
For me, it still boils down to what is in this proposal for Fort Mill. And I haven't had anyone ask me to go out and seek new residential homes in Fort Mill, not one. The people that email, call, catch you in the grocery store, it's, it's, there's no interruption in that message of enough's enough. So I have a hard time grappling with the, and this was a discussion I intended to have tonight. There, there can't be a misunderstanding in the public's eyes that we don't have what it takes to do a moratorium on growth. We don't. You have to have something that is describable, that you can fix during the time that you take away people's property rights. You're taking away people's property rights during that period of time, and you have to fix something in that to legally be able to do a moratorium, which is essentially stop growth. We don't have that. We don't have anything we can fix in that period of time. So we have to look at each one individually and independently to determine what's right. Because I've said this since the day one, if I owned seven acres of land, somebody offered me a lot of money for it, this close to retirement, or my mom might have needed health care or something, I'd not be happy with the people that said no to it, since we've said yes so many times before.
I think that's been the problem. We haven't said no.
We've said no a couple different times.
Look, we have, but the mayor hit on it when we, the, the property down Dobie's, and when you said that. I mean, we heard the constituents, the Rosa F. for that.
There was a good reason for that no.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely a good reason.
That was a good project, but it was just, the road was, is a dangerous rural farm road, like I grew up on. It's not me, Dobie's Bridge Road is not that corridor of it. So.
But I do think that there's a systemic belief that all growth is bad, and it's not. You know, we're going to be talking here shortly about another development that includes a potential grocery store in an area that doesn't have one. And when you think about the traffic concerns that everyone's quick to bring up, well, guess what? You don't have to drive across town to get to a grocery store if you have one closer to you. You know, so there are things that aren't readily available to help people think through the yes or the no. So it's up to us. That's what we're sitting here for. That's exactly what we're sitting here for. But I do want to make it as fair to all parties in the transaction as possible. And to Jamie's point, I don't want runaway really good developers that put a lot of effort into it, and then we're stuck with what we're stuck with. Now, does that allow us to go back and change that previous vote? I don't think so.
You know, but in turn too, you know, everybody wants all this nice stuff, and we are getting a Chipotle. I saw that coming, but it's not in the town. It's in the unincorporated area. But we are hitting mile markers for these larger corporations and these stores and restaurants and whatnot that people would like to have in our area are finally looking at us because of rooftops. They're not going to come to us just because we smile out nice and say, this is a really good place, you should try it out. They want to make sure that they can generate the money and the flow that they need to be successful, because when they come here, they want to be successful. And we want them to be, and not just me and us, but Fort Mill, we all want them to be successful if they do decide to come here, because it's not just going to be, I'm going to go and buy a burrito from there, you know, one of my neighbor's kids is going to work there, or my neighbor might be the manager there. I want them to be successful and have a job and do stuff. So growth and prosperity and everything kind of goes hand in hand, and you can't pull one string not thinking it's going to affect the other side. And I, and I'm trying to tie into what the mayor said, because I get all kinds of emails about it also, on how we're growing out of control, and we don't know what we're doing, and, and things aren't what it used to be. Well, no, they're not. They're not what they used to be. I think they're actually better for growing as a town. We, we, we are becoming a force in this area as opposed to this sleepy little town that was dictated to by other forces as to what we could do and where we could go and how we could grow. We are taking destiny in our own hands, and I think that's a wonderful thing. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be on my soapbox.
I was thinking about green acres and the guy up on the pole, and the music started playing. Okay. So we're currently sitting on a motion to approve Old Business Item Number Two and a second for a development agreement on land we did not vote to annex. All those in favor of the motion on the table, show of hands, please say aye. All those with show of hands opposed to this, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Thank you. Good discussion. New Business Item Number One. First reading and public hearing, and we will do the public hearing first. Annexation request, Crossroads Development Partners LLC, case number 2021-0485, an ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Numbers 738-0000-059, portion of 738-0000-094, 738-0000-077, and 738-0000-046, containing approximately 36.71 plus or minus acres, located on Fort Mill Parkway and off Hare Road, Ward 4. This is in Mr. Moody's Ward, and Penelope is our expert. Do I need to vote to open public hearing? Okay. Can I have a motion for the public hearing, please?
Make a motion. Second.
All those in favor of opening a public hearing on New Business Item Number One, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right. I know we have people that are interested in sharing with us.
No, I just didn't know.
No, there's no speaker.
Tell you that sooner later.
Hello, everybody.
Do you need a chair?
What's that?
Do you need a chair?
No, actually, I'm good. You only get three minutes, so I better hurry.
All right.
I'm Chris Stevens. I live at 1870 Williams Road. I've been there for six years. I'm retired, and we moved there with a family. I've been living over this plan pretty comprehensively now. I believe I'm in the annexation part, but my main concern is traffic. So overall, speaking from perspective of traffic, the last three or six years, I should say, the traffic down Williams Road has increased, especially when we put the parkway in, and it's going faster and faster. And I've almost been hit several times. So my main concern with the plan, it's not necessarily the plan itself, but our accommodations or what we're going to do about limiting the traffic in or keeping the traffic down to the 35 mile speed limit. We only have one 35 mile speed limit on, I mean, sign on the street.
Take your time.
And that's when you're coming off of Hensley on to Williams. You're coming off of Fort Mill Parkway on the, there's no speed limit sign. And so I'm very, very concerned about Harris Peter going in, all of these wonderful things that are going to happen. I'm more concerned about how we can accommodate or help with the traffic situation.
While you're standing there, would you please take a note and get in touch with the OT and have a speed limit sign installed?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for, I, I believe you're the Realtor that I bought my house from.
I think I might be. You should have called me.
Let me tell you about my house.
But you're enjoying it, right?
I really, my, again, my concern is that traffic. And I don't, I don't totally know, I've read as much as I can to understand it, I don't totally know the traffic, you know, and what's the percentages and what we think is going through there. I think it's low. And I think too, that what's going to happen with Harris Peter and all of that, is people are going to come off 160, and they're going to use Williams Road to cut through. So that's my plea, say, and I'm enjoying my home. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Okay, I think I'm signed up for later too, but I said what I said, I think I'm good.
Please let us know if you need help getting back to the car.
Okay. Somebody's killing me.
Okay. We get you one of those things we carry like queen sheet.
Sabby, while we're waiting, a question. I noticed Hensley Road had no truck through on that. Does Williams have that?
Frida Price.
Hi, Frida. How are you?
I'm well. I hope you are.
We are. We are ready to hear your thoughts.
Ready, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm here this evening because I do not live in the town of Fort Mill anymore. I live in Old Williamsburg. But when I moved here, Mr. J. Max Henson has a Ford dealership on Tom Hall Street, and I bought a car from him. So I'm well aware of people's respect for their property and, and all that. And, but I moved here to Fort Mill because it was, it had the charm and the small-town feeling that I grew up with. And I feel like annexing this property is just another big step in, in becoming a larger metropolitan area. I sit on the ARFATs committee, the Citizens ARFATs Committee, and I know what traffic does to, when we put in high-density housing and leave a lot of people in, and it doesn't matter how old they are, because I'm 70 now, and I still drive my car everywhere I want to go, when I can get through. But I live on Williams Road, not in the small cul-de-sacs that Old Williamsburg makes up. We are on the main road, and we have a lot of traffic. Fortunately, our road was repaved not too very many years ago, so we don't have the potholes anymore. But, but the traffic, I know what traffic does to roads, and it ruins them. And so how long will it be before we have broken roads again? And my main concern with this, and I respect, I respect the property owners to do, to want to do what they want to do with their property, but at some point in time, we have to look at the greater good for the people that live in this community. And even though I'm not in the town, I feel, I'm, I live in Fort Mill. So it was a township when I moved here, and it included everything. So I still feel that township. So I still feel that township feeling. And I just wanted to let you know that it's not out of ill will for these people. It's not out of anything but a great concern for the traffic and the amount of infrastructure that it's going to cause for everything, roads, schools. And I realize it's supposed to be senior living, but some of the housing is supposed to be senior. But we all know that things can change on a dime around here. And I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration and your wisdom. And I'm praying for you to make a wise choice for the citizens of this township. Thank you.
Thank you, Frida. Thank you.
My name's Dave Frye.
You're Frida Houston.
I am.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
You've already heard from the intelligent half. So you have to bear with me. Um, and I'll just, well, one thing I'll say is, first off, it's not on the gym, but it's hard to, we're not even, hey, Trudy, we're not even, uh, we don't say that. But the things you're deciding here.
That's why you have a place to speak.
Right. So that, that's why. And I'm actually signed up for several items, but in my opinion, they're all fine. So I'll just, you won't have to listen to me three times. My issues are with, um, not so much the annexation, although I'm against that just because of the domino effect. But people's land, is their land going there? That won't, I guess if they're requesting annexation, that's, you know. And then now the town is next to us. There's not much of, of the county left. We're kind of leaving this up. We like what we got going on over there in the county. We don't necessarily want to be part of the city. And we don't want to have any more impact from things that the city does. As far as the zoning and the comprehensive plan and the planning committee. I feel like if the planning committee was new in their job, we wouldn't even have to be here. I don't know anybody in Fort Mill, you know, a lot of people in Fort Mill, that thinks we need more development, more higher density, um, when you're traffic, particularly. It affects everyone, not just us. Um, to the comprehensive plan, what's the use of a comprehensive plan? If you just ignore it and change it. If you want to do development with your land, do it. We're in the area of development. And as far as the development, I see what's planned, but as near as I can tell, there's nothing off in the end. They can come back and request a change later on, just like the comprehensive zone.
Can I, can I interrupt you, David? Because Frida said the same thing. Um, I want to assure you that when we enter into a planning agreement, there are many restrictions to making changes to it. It has to go through a, a very comprehensive plan and review before any change could be made. So this isn't one that could flip to unrestricted. If it's accepted as restricted, it has to be restricted.
Well, my comment to that, I said, you have a comprehensive plan that you want to change.
Which provides a framework and it's a good framework.
Okay, what you want, you're changing. You're, you're going to vote to change the zoning from your comprehensive plan. So what good is a comprehensive plan? What good is a development agreement? And you can vote to change it later. See what I'm saying?
I'll be happy to come and sit with you and Frida and talk through all these issues because three minutes is an ample time to do justice to it.
But I just, I don't feel free. I just see what I said.
Whether, whether we approve it or not, there are some things that I think I want you to understand. And I will be happy to sit with you and Frida and talk.
I, I have invested time to understand that. That's what the planning commissions report. And I'm disappointed that they recommend.
Davy, I am keeping a timer up here.
Lisa is keeping a timer for you? Be nice if we could figure out a way to put one on, one of the, I know we did that once before. I just don't want it to have that big gong sound.
Hey, how you doing? My name's John Powers. I'm property from Hare Road. Appreciate y'all's time tonight. Wish that we could all be together, so to speak. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but things have gotten kind of out of control recently with traffic in town. Would anybody agree to that? I'm sure there's been plenty of, uh, traffic impact analysis attached to a lot of those projects. Not sure what the disconnect is, but sooner or later, things are going to have to get under control and it's up to you guys to do that. Um, you know, like I said, traffic is already bad over here. I don't know what the incentive is to import Gold Hill Road and 160 or Baxter and Carolina Crossing or Pleasant Road and Gold Hill Road over to this side of town. Uh, I think that we, you know, all were looking for the bypass to kind of mitigate some of these traffic issues. Um, but when you look at the site plan and this development, grocery stores, banks, fast food restaurants, places like that don't set up shop where there's not a metric shit ton of traffic, okay? The second this project gets approved, you're going to have commercial real estate flyers that go out citing traffic counts of this much, density count of this much. It's going to be marketed as a high-density, high-traffic area. Otherwise, fast food restaurants, banks, and grocery stores aren't interested in, okay? So the impact of this project, no matter how much green space or sidewalks are involved, the traffic impact and the development, the mitigation, it's a smokescreen in my opinion. And sooner or later, you guys are going to have to get control of this and say no. Otherwise, you're just leaving a legacy of people in your wake scrambling to deal with traffic, to get the fires to put them out, to respond to police, uh, or crime calls. Everybody has to struggle with this stuff. And the only thing that we really gain for is a handful of people exchanging a financial transaction that benefits the community some. But if you look at what's happened in the past 10 or 12 years, month to month, year to year, it's only getting worse. And every time you have a traffic impact analysis, that's no disrespect to Kimble Horn, it's wrong, okay? It misses the mark every time. LPL Financial told the York County, "You fix this interchange at exit 85 or we're out," right? So what do the county have to do? They had to come back and they had to.
They really didn't do that.
I'm sorry?
They really didn't do that.
They didn't tell them fix it or leave?
No, sir, they didn't because I was at the head of RFATs at the time and spoke with LPL in person.
How did that project get bumped up ahead of all the other stuff? Was it originally?
It did not get bumped up ahead of all the other stuff.
So the reports in the paper were wrong?
Yes, they were, if that's what they said.
Well, okay, but traffic at that, that particular intersection is great, though.
No, it's terrible and let's don't be ridiculous, okay?
And I'm, like I said, I appreciate y'all's time. I'm not here to bully the people. But this continues to happen over and over and over again. And everybody knows, it, it, there are some benefits from it, don't get me wrong. But we have to live here. And turning a blind eye and pretending that it's going to be okay. Just look at the past track record. It hasn't played out that way for the majority of places in town. And it's only going to get worse unless you guys or the people that defeat you in elections get controlled. Thank you.
I believe he said his name was John Powers and he lives on Hare Road in the unincorporated part of the town. Hi.
Hello, um, my name is Ellie Hamilton. Um, I'm here to speak against, um, the building project practically right next to my home and neighborhood. Um, now, my family already has a business right, um, next to our home. Um, so, and we like our house and where we are and so do our neighbors. And so, but we need to be able to enjoy living there without any more noise and traffic disturbance. So it would be sad if we have to end up moving just because people want to take over a family-friendly neighborhood with so much commercial. Um, I believe that it will not be in your best interest to build buildings right up against where families live because we do not plan on selling or moving anytime soon. My neighbors and I already have preschools right next to us. Personally, I do not think it would be fair to the families that live on Hare Road, um, to live between businesses. Please give more consideration to the citizens, roads, land, and animals than to commercial businesses. To me, this means a lot because I am a child and I would not like to have to grow up with businesses very close to where I live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's it?
For the annexation.
Who's she?
Um, her name was Ellie Hamilton. Elliot, I love that name. Okay, um, do we need to vote to close the public hearing? We do. I need a motion to close the public hearing. I got a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. We will now go to the first reading of new business item number one. I have previously read what this business item is in regards to the public hearing. I'm not going to read all those land numbers again. Um, do I have a motion on the first reading?
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
Have a motion and a second to accept the first reading. Anybody have questions, comments, assertions, insults?
No insults here. I have a question for staff. On page 112 of the development, uh, part of our packet, the trip generation for this. So, um, within the Kimble Horn, um, section. So the subtotal seeing 17, I'm seeing 17,942. Then there's an internal capture of 7,600 for a, a net new external trips of 9876. So how does that work where you have, you know, they have general office, there's 521, medical dental, 3898, supermarkets, 53, 39. How, explain the net to me. How does 17,000 go down to 9,800?
So what that number is looking at is the internal capture of traffic that starts within the development and also ends within the development. So you may go to the grocery store before your doctor's appointment. So you're never leaving that one parking lot potentially. Um, so it subtracts out numbers that are assumed to be internal capture, not going out on the streets necessarily, just staying within the development.
Okay.
So is this the information that came from the TIA that he's referencing?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm just, I'm getting ready to ask another question. In regards to the information that was provided to us on the TIA and then the comments that are coming to us on, they're never right. Is this purely a perception issue or, I think Kimble Horn is very well-renowned for their work in this area. Can you help me with that?
Yes, um, it is. And the, the average public needs to understand that these are the experts, transportation experts. And the town is not just relying on them. It's a collaborative. We work with SCPOT and York County and the town of staff to have these type of meetings to determine the scope and document of what, what intersections we're setting and to do the analysis, we work together. So it's just not just Kimble Horn. Um, there's a lot of people that, um, look at the, the analysis and come up with a transportation mitigation agreement. And this project has a number of improvements, I believe over 21 improvements that they would need to make, um, to accommodate the traffic that this new project could generate.
Okay. In that same line of thought, the information that was provided to us prior to our meeting, because believe it or not, council members do read through the information and ask questions prior to our meeting. We are not oblivious to the information before we get here and three of us live on that side of town. So, uh, given the information that was provided to us from the TIA, which was a, a combination of efforts to produce, the only area that I saw with a 2024 build-out that became difficult from the alphabetical rating of the area was one intersection. There was one intersection that became an F with an asterisk. The remainder of those were A, D, and E. I did not C, but the one F. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Page 137, I think.
Which one? On the development agreement or?
Here's for context, an E is worse than an F.
E is? You want to give me one?
Hmm? I went to close, you know?
Yeah, I was going to say, um, I understand, but let's go ahead and make reference that you are not correct. Everybody hear it? Alrighty then. I'm just teasing. Yeah, I was going to say, somebody's going to have to retrain me on that one. Um, but I, I do think it's, it's critical that the public that will view this or is listening understand that the planning commission's function is to look at each project based on the criteria of ordinances, zones, and requirements from our town plans, from the comprehensive plan. It is a huge amount of information that is presented to the planning commission. They then take all that information and ensure that it follows what the town's regulatory oversight looks like. Then it comes to us to make a decision on whether we feel it is the right project for the community or not. It may be just like the D.R. Horton, uh, project down on Dobie's. It hit everything it needed to hit and they were going to make all of the improvements as were requested. But we felt it was the wrong location for that volume of traffic. So we do hold that right to make that decision. But because we make a decision doesn't mean that the planning commission doesn't know what they're doing. We have a stellar planning commission. They're one of the best. We have a good planning staff. I, I want to make clear that these are folks that spend endless hours reviewing and trying to make sure that their collective efforts are excellent in looking at what comes to us.
And they're volunteers, by the way. They give their time. Yes.
And, and that was, um, you know, when the gentleman did step out, I did give them a brief synopsis of, of their duties.
And I will follow up. I will.
And just for that S intersection, I mean, that will be improved with a traffic signal. And that S was really the P in trip, um, just for clarification.
For the current zoning of this property, it's currently RD2, right, with York County? Can you explain a little bit of the summary that was in our package of what that means currently today, if nothing were to change?
Sure. Um, so basically, the property that is being discussed right now for annexation, um, those properties are in the county. So the county has our own zoning district, which is RD2. Um, it allows single-family residents, 10,000 per dwelling. They also allow townhomes, apartments, and condominiums. But this district also allows child, adult care centers, religious uses, manufactured home subdivisions, parks, nursing facilities, and schools. Um, and they do require a minimum open space of 20%. Um, so if, if this property does not get annexed, the property can be developed with an RD2 in York County with those uses.
And, um, hate to ask this right now, but do you, um, have an approximate how many homes that could be or any kind of?
With its apartments?
Yeah, I mean, okay, sorry, I should have, I started.
Because that is in the county, so I don't know what other requirements they will have because they do a TIA as well.
Right.
And that's if they keep it though?
Yes.
They can vote to change it.
Um, and then the minimum twenty percent for open space, guesstimate what, how much open space that we're gonna have or undeveloped with this property or this project? Because I know there's several buffers and parks and different things that they're providing.
Walking trails.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, with overall, once we get to that next section, the development agreement, you know, it talks about more, you know, they have open space, trails, a lot of, because of the shrines are being protected. So, there is, even though the density of this project based on the acreage is not a lot because of the protection of open space and undisturbed buffer and something that the planning commission added was protecting more undisturbed, like the caliber of trees, the developer has worked that into the development agreement. And that was some of the comments and concerns from the planning commissioners that added those conditions in the motion of recommending. And so, we'll discuss, I know this is just one part for the audience, just to understand the project is a large project and we have, you have to understand we have four ordinances. So, this one right now is just the annexation.
And everything presented to date would fall within the overlay on the bypass, correct? Which was aggressively put into place to work to manage in front of growth on the bypass. Questions? I for one will speak and say that the entertainment of this idea was certainly more appealing than just your basic residential development because it is age-restricted, you get fewer trip counts. It was to be somewhat self-contained where there was a grocery store, doctor's offices, the things that those folks that live in that development would frequent. Those are things that cut down on the traffic. Certainly, you're luring residents to that area. But for me, the, um, the care facility that was to be provided Fort Mill does not have. When my grandparents were in a care facility and what they could get in at the time was on the other side of Charlotte, I would have been extremely happy to have been able to visit them more frequently because they were here in town rather than to have to drive all the way off of Sugar Creek Road to visit with them, that was difficult. So, um, if anyone asks why Gwen alone would consider such a thing, there are good points and perspectives to the development plan. That doesn't mean it gets approved, that doesn't mean anything more than not all growth is bad growth.
And I have one question, this is just annexing thirty-six acres to go in conjunction with all, what's already in the city? Is that correct?
That is correct, but the next project that's already in the city, it's changing it, the zoning to the MXU. Yes, sir.
So, just, I'm still looking at the TIA here and I've reviewed this and read it, but for staff like Ed, what concerns me a lot is that I can just see some people crossing that bypass. Or the residential, and I think Lisa's hit on this before, that there's not, I worry about safety for elderly people if there's gonna be, I mean, yeah, you're welcome. Um, you know, that really concerns me about, and then golf carts scare me. I see kids riding up, we've talked about this, down Dobie's already in golf carts, you know, and just, I mean, that's a big concern of mine personally is just crossing where Hair is and then coming over Williams in the bypass, that there's houses on that other side crossing over. I just, that's a concern, a personal concern I have. For, I can see my seventy-five-year-old parents on a golf cart and my mom fussing at my dad about something and he pulling right out, you know, in front of someone.
And that's a valid concern, um, you know, staff, when we looked at this project, you know, we mentioned about having a similar concept with the tunnel that is going for the Elizabeth Spratt property. But because of the scale of the project, this project is not as big as the Spratt. It's not financially able. One thing that they did look into, you know, with, because this road, Fort Mill Parkway, you know, it's governed right now with SCDOT and York County. When a developer is at a place in time where the rooftops are there, you know, built development, they do a signal warrant analysis. And so, there's no doubt there will be a signal for this project. And one of the commitments of the developer that's in the development agreement is to have a protective crosswalk. Now, to answer the question about golf carts, just previous experience, I work in Lancaster County, the SCDOT allows golf carts in South Carolina to cross over. So, you could cross over and you are basically driving that golf cart like a normal car.
Right, without on your back.
Which is scary, but it is, you know, with a proper permit for golf carts is legal to cross over. In regards to the safety connection, you know, there would be, you know, once the traffic signal or even before, there would be a protective crosswalk.
Go into a little more detail about protected, how is it protected? I'm asking out of myself and for the audience because I'm ignorant.
Road arms?
Yeah, I mean.
With a traffic signal, they're called pet heads, basically, you know, it's identified on the road that there's a crosswalk and it's safer. I will say with a traffic signal, you press the button, stop, all traffic stops and you're able to cross the road. In regard, before the traffic signal, there is something that the developer has put in the development agreement to have a protected, when I say protected, like a median or something to the fact that there could be, people can cross path over and stop and then, you know, further on proceed.
Kind of like when you cross Oakland Avenue going in Winter, can you hear the, you know, the times?
Another example, out of Baxter into Lowe's parking lot, crossing over one sixty at the red light.
Or down at Pleasant, crossing over to Harris Teeter and Mo's and.
Now, when I first heard about this particular, um, project, I had, um, mixed emotions about it. Some of it, like the mayor was saying, with the, um, different facilities, you know, I thought were really good, especially for the elderly, which I think somebody did earlier. They're about there, I would say, too. But, um, my biggest concern would be them getting out on the road. And what I understood was that there was gonna be a tunnel under. That was what I understood from the very beginning. And then I guess it was sometime the last meeting or so that I found out and then you confirmed it.
Yeah.
It's not going to be, so that's why I feel just like Ronnie and I think it's pretty, um, safety.
Yeah, and like I stated, you know, the developer, you know, when we first met with him, like staff did tell them, you know, here we have the Fort Mill Parkway, you know, we have a similar concept, you know, this one a little bit more smaller scale development, but, you know, we just tell them, please look into it to see about the tunnel. And when they did their cost estimation, and that's why it was presented to the planning commission. Planning commission was presented that there is no tunnel, that it's not feasible.
So, the stop control, is that what you were talking about?
At a traffic, once a traffic signal is put up and that's basically, you know, they know that the homes have been built or like in this case, it would be the age-restricted or even, you know, the commercial aspect of it, you know, that it, basically you do a warrant analysis with SCDOT and they, they look at the traffic count and they say, yes, this area needs it. And once, you know, they put the traffic signal, then that's when you have the protected, you know, crosswalks with the pedestrian head components that the citizens can press and have a safe mechanism to cross the bypass. And again, you know, those are choices. I mean, we do live in the south and we love our cars. So, you know, you don't, you know, some people feel more comfortable driving, you know, but this type of mixed-use development and mixed-use development plans, you want to have different alternatives because that also helps with traffic to get people off of the road. If it's protected and it causes the citizens to have, spend less time on the road or in their vehicles and they can enjoy nature and they can cross safely, you know, that can also help in the future the traffic issues that people are seeing today because every day you see people by themselves in a car, you know, instead of having carpooling or something, you know. So, the more cars on the road, it's what Mr., the citizen was talking about. It is increasing because so many people are moving to this area.
Further questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. The motion on the table is to approve the first reading of item number one. All the, is that?
Annexation.
Annexation, excuse me, excuse me. Annexation request, first reading. All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? We'll move to new business item number two, rezoning requests for the same area, Crossroads Development Partners LLC, case twenty-two-one zero four eight six. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County tax map numbers zero-two-zero-one-seven-zero-one-zero-six-four and zero-two-zero-one-seven-zero-one-zero-six-five from PND Plan Neighborhood Development to MXU, Mixed Use Development. This is in Ward four, Mr. Chris Moody and Penelope is our expert, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number two.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. This is in related to the same project as previously discussed. Are there further questions?
I think we need to go to public hearing.
Oh, uh, yep, sure, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion for the public hearing?
So said.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. We're good. Sorry, jumped right over that because I knew that all other people had spoken. Can I ask a request? Can we put public hearing first in the Senate? Yes.
Ms. Hamilton has signed up for the fourth, um, public hearing, the development agreement, I believe, and she would like to come now to this one for the annexation. She has not signed up for this one, I'm assuming for the rezoning. She signed up for the development agreement. Will you allow her to come?
Oh, why not? Is it the, is it the young Ms. Hamilton?
Uh, no, it's not.
We can't do that? Okay, no. Yep, sorry. Thank you, Barry. So, that's not Ms. Hamilton.
Right there. No, behind the roof, sir.
I was looking for a microphone.
Ah, there you go.
I do want to apologize that I assumed the annexation was less of an issue than the rezoning. So, I would have gone during that if I had known that, but anyway, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to come before you to address the council. While this is only our second presentation to you on this significant mixed-use project, our planning documents go as far back as last fall, which is a testament to how carefully and how sensitively we have approached this unique place. We have followed five key principles. A cohesive, sensitive land plan, a one-hundred percent age-restricted residential component, extensive traffic mitigation, critical natural resource sensitivity, important needed community services. Encompassing seven parcels and one-hundred-and-fifteen acres, we have continued refining the land plan over the past two months to even more carefully address these goals. The result is a carefully integrated plan that allows the land uses to function together as well as possible with the least impact to the surrounding area. We all know several key fundamentals. This assemblage of vacant land at this crossroads has been destined for a more service-oriented use for quite some time. Replacing the existing high-density residential zoning with one that is more sensitive to the surrounding community only makes sense. Additionally, much of the bypass run is from one sixty to Spratt Street is either already developed or zoned as commercial or institutional uses, which this plan complements. Reviewing the land uses one more time. Approximately seventy-five of the one-hundred-and-fifteen acres is planned as completely age-restricted residential or single-family patio homes at a density of just under three units to the acre. We've talked about those benefits in previous meetings. Fifty percent less traffic impacts, no school impacts, tax-positive home values, and perhaps the most important, a population that cares about the community and serving it. Medical and office services that are sorely lacking in this part of town. We have three practices already committed to the project and a number of others in discussions. As a service to the surrounding community as well as our residents and to reduce further trip traffic, we intend to combine grocery and other important retail services, unique specialty shops, and restaurants within an architecturally appropriated and integrated design. And finally, not as a bookend, but as an important component of the age-restricted community is our independent living, assisted living, and memory care facility. I think it's very important to point out that independent living does not necessarily mean no need for specialized services or for modified environments. This facility provides a place for transition from the completely self-sustained residents, their spouses, and their parents. Finally, I'd like to review some changes, enhancements, and requests we have made in response to meetings with the staff, planning commission, and especially with members of the community. These include the completion of the TMA addressing all of our impacts. No gas or convenience store use. Preservation of grand trees. Commitment to an IL, AL, and memory care facility. One-hundred percent buffer along Dobie's Bridge Road has been changed. That's much more than what was originally in the plan. A wide burn that runs down the side in the back of the retail that will help separate that, those uses from the adjacent properties. And a commitment to walking trails. I think the last slide, if you want to take a look at it after I'm stopping, shows you that we can create a comprehensive system where all the components of the community can use walking trails to go to the other uses within the community. I want to thank you, I think this is a great use of the property. I've understood, listened to everything that you've heard so far and I'm happy to answer any questions at any point in your deliberations further tonight.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Penelope, wait.
Yeah.
You sure?
Uh-huh.
Do you need assistance?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second person was David Price and he said he's already said what he needed to say.
Thank you.
And, go ahead.
So, are we through the remainder of those that need to speak for this item?
For this item, yes. And once you all make a vote to close out, I do want to have a correction to make.
Okay, alright. Okay, um, there are no further participants for the public hearing. We will close the public hearing at this time. Now, I need a motion to open the first reading of the rezoning request.
Already been made.
I beg your pardon?
It's already been made.
Okay, alright, so we've already had that and the second, thank you. Alright, do you need to make a correction at this?
Yeah, for the record, from Mr. Moody's, from the previous item, I just want to stand corrected. Yeah, for the record, um, from Mr. Moody, um, from the previous item, I just want to stand corrected. The traffic signal warrant, it's not for Hair Road. Um, you know, it basically, um, the Henson improves the level of service from F to B and it does warrant the signal. So I just wanted to correct that.
Okay, all right.
The hair is the F issue even with turn lanes, which they are going to do turn lanes. But it doesn't, um, have enough side street traffic to actually have the signals. I just wanted to say that. I do apologize.
Oh, fun. Okay, um, do we have further discussion in regards to the relocate rezoning request? Put the glasses on, Gwen.
So, um, Penelope, if you don't mind describing a little bit of what the current state is and where, um, they're asking it to go and how that looks different. Um, so it's going from request to go from Planned Neighborhood Development to Mixed Use. Planned Neighborhood just means more homes, correct, with no commercial or limited commercial? Can you elaborate?
There are some, but, um, this was before my time here and, and Mr. Pettit could probably explain a little bit more. When the Henson property came into the town, because they had an annex to be into the town limit, they annexed with, um, a project to the PND, the Planned Neighborhood District. There is no plan, when, when this project came to acquire more land, there was no development condition with the PND. It, it's been so many years. So staff recommended, because there was no plan, that they needed to rezone the property from PND to mixed use. And so for us to have actual development conditions. Because today, say Crossroads didn't come and the Henson, um, um, property owner sold the property, they would still have to come back through council, through planning commission and county council to have the development condition because there's no conditions right now to the PND. Am I correct?
You, you are. I mean, it, I can't remember exactly what year it came in, but it, it came in for the, the zoning, but you, you, you all are more familiar with the MXU zoning. When we do an MXU project, we have a development conditions and concept plan tied to it. They came in for the first piece to get annexed. That was step one. Step two, when it would have been developed, would have been to come back, like you were saying, for the, the concept plan and development conditions. Um, and, and so the, the difference in PND and MXU is, whereas MXU is, is more flexible, um, I, I think with commercial, PND is residential focused. It does allow, again, like Penelope was saying, some minimal levels of commercial, but it is very much residentially focused. So changing it to the MXU brings commercial much more into play, which according to their concept plan is something that they're proposing to do on, on a majority of these pieces.
Would the development on the bypass near Catawba Ridge that has two, uh, areas of commercial on the front end, would that be a PND?
Uh, um, a PND, uh, example is Springfield. The golf course is the commercial component.
Okay.
Um, whereas it is 90% residential. Uh, Avery Lake is another example where they have, uh, like a, 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 adult care facility.
Adult care facility.
That is the one little tiny piece of commercial and what is a residential development.
Okay, does that help?
It does help, um, but I thought, I heard you say that, I just want to clarify. If it was stayed that, or as of today, if somebody wanted to develop that in the PND status, it would still come before planning and us and we would still have, um, somewhat of a voice in what that looks like or the vision of what that becomes, right?
For the part that's in the town.
Yeah, right.
Not for the part that's in the town.
Yeah, in the county, we don't.
And that would be through a public hearing process with, you know, taking it through planning commission and the public hearing here with the plan for PND. If the Hensons decided to, you know, come, you know, develop it as a PND zoning district that it was today.
Okay, but if we were to vote today for it to go to mixed use and everything else doesn't happen, we then do not have control anymore necessarily of that coming before us?
You can't change what we don't annex, so it would only change the part that's in the area.
That is, you know, if it becomes, if it, if the Henson property's own MXU, but the other property, you know, the whole project doesn't move forward because it's missing the component of something, then then the development agreement.
It's null and void.
It's, it's over.
Right, but if someone else wanted to, after it was done mixed use, again, it's kind of like the other property. I know all the pieces have to go together.
Show council and the public what are they proposing with their development conditions. Sort of like similar to what the Henson property is today with PND.
Right.
Clear as mud.
It's clear, but it's, um...
So basically what you're asking is if we change, um, the zoning and something falls through in the project, the zoning is still in place. Is that what you're asking?
Correct.
I, I would like to add something. I, I don't remember my alphabet on this one. So, in, in all four of these ordinances, we, um, put in a, a caveat that says, um, if, if the property is not transferred to the new ownership group for Crossroads within 180 days of the approval, then everything becomes null and void. So, so just as an example, council could approve all four ordinances, first and second reading. If within 180 days of that approval, the properties are not transferred over to Crossroads Development Partners because something went wrong in their due diligence or any number of reasons, they decide to walk away from the project, all of the rezoning, the annexation, the development agreement, all of it becomes null and void.
Goes back to what it was.
It goes back to what it was.
Correct.
That's good.
There is that caveat.
That is in place.
It, it is in place for all of them except the comprehensive plan amendment, but, uh, that was just a wording issue that we're going to wordsmith for second reading, uh, to verify that it's in there. So it'll be in all four, should it make it to second reading.
Good. That gives us some protection.
And that prevents us from an Oakland Point scenario, right? From running into that?
It is, I mean, it is specific to Crossroads Development Partners. It would, it would transfer to Crossroads Development Partners, but who's to say who is Crossroads Development Partners doesn't change, but...
Well, go back.
But it still, the change for development rights goes into that, in the development agreement, so...
What I, what I'm saying is the, the ordinances are valid. If within 180 days, the property gets transferred to Crossroads Development Partners. That's not to say that Crossroads Development Partners doesn't change entity or something like that.
After the fact.
After the fact.
But I thought we added something to all development agreements that said, if the entity changes, like with Oakland Point, that they would either have to come back to us or it would travel with the property.
I guess what I'm saying is who is in charge of Crossroads Development Partners changes or something like that.
I don't care who's in charge of it. I care what happens with the land.
I'm just saying, you could be working with the same entity, different people. Uh, that was.
Okay.
That was all I was trying to say.
Okay, just long as the rules are the same, given the development of the land. That's all I care about.
Yes, the rules would be the same.
Thank you. That's what matters. Does that help?
It helps.
But you're still noodling.
Still noodling, yeah. Can we go to halftime real quick?
We didn't build a commercial or halftime into this one.
I've been entertaining, um, okay.
Do you think you're going to have another question?
I think I'm still, well, um, well, and they all go together. So it's hard to jump, but it's hard to make a decision to, not hard to make a decision, but make the best decision. Um, yeah, I am struggling to the point, something that was made by one of the people that spoke to us a little bit, was that this side of the road have the commercial, more of the commercial side when it's tucked in to a more quiet side of the homes and stuff where, rather than being buttered up against more on the bypass. Um, kind of the point Mr. Moody's made before, pulling out your neighborhood and seeing a little bit more of the commercial right there. Um, I know I can't say, hey, if you'll change this, we'll vote yes, because it, it's not that simple. Um, so that's kind of my question. It's just understanding, you know, honestly, in my heart, do I really want this to be a mixed use on that side of the road versus the Planned Neighborhood side of it, um?
And, and one thing, can I piggyback just once, if you're done?
Sure.
I will say, um, the developer, when he met with White Grove, they did meet, try to meet with neighboring neighborhoods and, um, in the area. And we met the complex on a Saturday, what, two hours? And that was one thing that we, I asked and some of the residents that concerned were that when you pull out of White Grove, you're not looking at three story. And they did come back, to their credit, and add the 100 foot buffers. They did do that request that, that's a lot of the people from White Grove were asking about that.
I think it's important to note too, that all the houses in White Grove back up to the road. They don't face it. Not that anybody would want three story in the backyard either. I get it.
Yeah, but when you leave the neighborhood, that would have been there if, it's still going to be there, but if it wasn't for the, I think, what did he say, 100 foot? Was that what he came and said earlier?
That's what he said.
That's what he said just now. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Let me pull up the design drawing real quick. I might, sorry. And, and again, to Jamie's point on the previous one, I do appreciate the developer and the level that he and staff have gone to to try to make this the best project possible for all involved.
Is that what you're going to say?
Yeah. Trying to see the roads.
Can you make that, broaden that out, Chris, so we can see what roads, what are pointed out?
Um, I can't. Four hour roads, um...
Development agreement.
Parkway here.
Anything moving?
Trying to find it in my files. Okay, I got it. On section four, page eight of 193 pages.
He's, he's got a red dot going.
Parkway here.
Good job.
Can you say it better?
So for that, yeah, for the assist to live in portion of it, living portion, um, the main entrance for them will be coming off of Williams.
So short distance in Williams, yeah.
And the portion where it says full movement on there, can you clarify what that means?
That means you can turn left or right coming out of the development onto Williams.
Okay, so the part that's green right there where full movement's over top of that, what, is that?
This, this piece here.
Yep.
That's pointing to this intersection over here.
Okay, gotcha. But what would the green part be?
That's future commercial.
There's future movement.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? Comments? Okay, uh, we have a motion to approve new business item number two, rezoning request, and a second with no further questions. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we've got three nays and three ayes. So that means it's not approved. Okay? Okay, um, we'll now move to new business item number three, which is a public hearing first, uh, for the amendment to the comprehensive plan, case 2021-0475. An ordinance amending the town of Fort Mill 2040, comprehensive plan, which was adopted December 14th, 2020, to amend the future land use map contained within the town of Fort Mill 2040, comprehensive plan. Penelope is our expert. Do I have a motion for the public hearing?
Make a motion to accept public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Penelope, do we have anybody to speak to this one?
No ma'am, nobody has signed up for the conference.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Now do I have a motion for the first reading?
Make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, questions, comments, discussion? I hear nothing. Cricket. Uh, what I do want to say for the public that is listening or will listen, the comprehensive plan is exactly what it's titled. It is a comprehensive plan that is a living, breathing document. It changes. I just happen to have a, a comprehensive plan back from the 80s in a little notebook. And to be honest with you, we grapple with the same issues now that we did then. And having lived here all my life, we've grappled with some issues all my life. To document a plan and put the effort into it to do the study and research doesn't mean that it is a forever decision because nothing, nothing that's in our lives isn't going to change at some point. We must retain the flexibility to make those changes. With that, if we voted tonight to change it, could vote two months from now to change it back. So that's not to say we should be haphazard with how we approach it, but it is not a cast in stone, ten commandment kind of decision. Okay? Am I right or wrong?
You're right. We don't even have to go back that far. We go back four years. It's changed from the last time we looked at it.
Yes, it has.
Because this is a large project, um, a development agreement, um, it's more than 25 acres. So the state allows them to go into a development agreement with the developer in the town. Um, one of the, the criteria to approve a development agreement is, does it, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? The future land use map. And so basically here, with all the parcels that they are combining, some of the parcels that are part of the crossroads, when you look at the future land use map that you all adopted, um, it, it, it shows it as the low, um, the, the moderate, low moderate density. And if you could see the map where we have in the staff report, current map, proposed map, the Henson property, which has been in the town, um, was labeled as low moderate density because it was vacant. The other parcel, the town, when you all adopted the comprehensive plan, you felt that it would be mixed use neighborhood development. And so what is happening now, because we have this development agreement and you're, you're putting all this property together, the, the low moderate was because the Henson property was vacant. And so what we are amending is just really some of the parcels that were low moderate. But the majority of the others that are, that were in the county and also, um, that are part of this crossroads, if you look at the proposed map, it was always neighborhood, um, mixed use neighborhood that this council adopted when you adopted the, the comprehensive plan.
And it's a little bit hard to tell with the current map, proposed map, um, where those lines kind of are falling. I know, you know, it, you, you don't deal with straight lines and that would drive me insane. So, um, trying to wind around with what is being asked of this one. Um, so just kind of clarifying, but thank you for saying that. Sure, absolutely, for me.
You mind, Penelope, come in?
Of course not.
So like, this is the current map. So this is the Henson.
Okay.
Okay, so that was always low moderate. Now this is some of the crossroads, so some of that that is being included. But other parts, like the Blanton piece, and were not, were always neighborhood mixed use. So you do have half and half. And it was because it was vacant.
Right.
And, and you have the, as a whole, if you have a project with a development agreement, um, you can amend the comprehensive plan. But I understand to the average citizen, it, it gets frustrating to them that, you know, you adopt a future land use map and it, you need to stick to it. But that's just a concept plan that can change with type of development. And oftentimes when the planners, um, look at the, the different parcels, they look at the current, um, um, use. And that current use was just farmland, so they left it as low moderate.
Everybody good? Okay. Um, we have an accept new business item motion for first reading for the amendment to the comprehensive plan. comprehensive plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, do we have three nays? Three? Thank you. New business item number four, we will go into our public hearing first, development agreement request, Crossroads Development Partners LLC, case twenty twenty-one zero four eight seven, an ordinance authorizing the entry by the town of Fort Mill into a development agreement with Crossroads Development Partners LLC, North Carolina Limited Liability Company, J. Max Henson LLC, J. Max Henson Jr., J. Max Henson III, Marshall Odell Henson, J. Max Henson Jr. as custodian for Adam Jason Henson, Raymond Lee Sarr, and Christie Lee Sarr. Am I saying that right? Sayer Sarr. Uh, Linnell Simmons Bailey, Judith Alicia Kimbrell, James Wayne Lancaster, Ronald, Ronald Allen Vogel, John W. May Senior, Brenda B. Tyson, and Ronald H. Bailey, Christopher Robert Blanton, Bonnie James Blanton, and Kenneth Dwayne Blanton, Thomas G. Hare for property located at York County Tax Map Numbers, zero two zero one seven zero one zero six four zero six five seven three eight zero 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 four six zero five seven zero seven seven, and a portion of zero nine four containing approximately one hundred and fourteen point nine seven acres located on Fort Mill Parkway, authorizing the execution and delivery of such development agreement and other matters relating thereto. This is Ward four. Chris Moody, Penelope is our expert. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion accept. Well, now we're going to public hearing?
Yep.
Make a motion to public hearing.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. I think we've got our first participant in the public hearing.
Well, I'd be understating it if I wasn't to say that I'm a little astounded about where we are. Um, you know, dollars are one thing, and there's hundreds of thousands that have gone through the dam at this point, but, but commitment to doing the right thing for the community is another. And, um, I, I don't know all of the procedures, but I think maybe there is a procedure for opening and recasting a vote on those two items, and, and I would beseech you to do that. And I, I'd like to find out if there's something more specific that I can address that, um, has, has resulted in where we are. I think there's a discussion about the tunnel. I think there's a misperception that the tunnel, that it's connecting, the Elizabeth project was built by that developer. It was not, or it will not be. Uh, that's a public project based on what the developer has told me. Um, the pedestrian crosswalk that we're planning to install does work. There is one in front of Catholic High where the high school students go across Highway fifty-one to get to the McDonald's. Um, it's, it's a practical solution to an issue that we raised. Uh, with regards to traffic, um, there will be millions of dollars spent on this project to mitigate traffic problems that are there currently, and those problems won't get any better with or without our project. So I think in light of the solutions that we've been offering and the fact that we've created a small mixed-use community that does a lot for the surrounding area and, and does take traffic from going into other parts of town, um, I can't see how we haven't put the best possible thing in front of you that we can. And I would like you to reconsider this if at all possible and, um, look at the totality of what we're trying to do.
Do you have any questions? For Phil?
I would like to make one comment. I did, um, ask about the tunnel, but that was not, I just said ask some questions about, but that was not totally, uh, everything concerning my vote.
Understood.
No further questions? I for one can tell you that the, the questions raised were in relation to crossing the bypass and safety. I think it's unfair to let you know, not let you know what is in open in a public setting. So, uh, those were the questions that were being raised at that point in time.
Well, and I, I don't mind saying that I think if all of this were on one side of the bypass, I might feel a little bit different. I also have concern of the commercial part, and as part of what reason I voted on a couple of these others, is the commercial part being tucked in to a lot of the residential that's been established in that area. Um, you have brought a amazing project to us, a- and it is hard to vote against it, I will tell you. You know, I've been laboring weeks on this, and I've been laboring even more tonight about it. So I appreciate what you've done, and I hope we can find a way to work together in the future. Um, and I hate that it hasn't gone your way, but, uh, there's a lot more that comes into play as well.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, trying to respond, if that was the big issue, um, you know, we didn't look at the idea of a, a walking, a, a overpass, a walking overpass. I, perhaps that merits some consideration. Um, you know, I, I think people crossing the bypass is, is a situation that does exist today, and there's no control. There's, there's no signalization that specifically protects them, and we, we've offered to do that. We offer to give a place for the community to make that crossing.
You've done more than what they did on, uh, front of the Fort Mill High School over in twenty-one.
Yep.
That cross is ready to cross, not even go a sidewalk to the berm of the road, and look at the crossing up there at twenty-one and one sixty going across to the peach stand. I mean, I understand everybody's concerns, but what these guys have, you know, proposed way exceeds anything we've already ever done on even more busier roads than we have.
And it is somewhat trying to put a Band-Aid on, you know, something that needs a lot more care.
I will say this. I mean, I, you know, I feel like, um, statistically, this is a tie. We talked with Mr. Huntley. We hoped that he'd been able to provide his input. Um, had he been able to be here, he would have voted for it. Um, so again, I, I just I'd beseech you for whatever reconsideration you might be able to give.
I'm just curious, where does everybody down there go grocery shopping?
On our side of town?
Mm-hmm.
I go into Indianland, rough the bypass, Harris Street, or rough one sixty to Harris Street. There isn't anywhere else you can go.
I go to Publix or Walmart or Food Line or Sam's Club.
And all that traffic that you guys bring into those areas of the town.
And I grew up in T G K driving.
More of the traffic that's already in town.
I grew up in T G K, driving the Cherry Road to go to the grocery store all the time. So, you know, convenience is relative. I agree. I mean, a- and again, the assisted living facility, I've said before, my grandmother was in one and needed the transition from being able to move in and still be able to drive to being able to unfortunately pass away in the facility. I absolutely know there's a need for that, and I applaud you, and I hope there's another way we can make that happen somewhere because it is definitely needed.
And you're gonna have over, over twenty-three acres of green space and walking trails. How big was the buffer between the community, the back neighborhood, and, uh, I see the big green swath right there. How much of a buffer was that?
Well, a lot of parts of the eastern property line, um, over three hundred feet, uh, as you go further down.
So that's like a football field.
And again, below, you've got areas there on the, along the creek that are a hundred to two hundred feet or more. You know, again, I, I don't know how anybody could get something more right than what has been done with, with this cycle plan. Um, you know, there's nothing that says that specific buildings have to go in specific places in this development group, Penelope, if I'm not mistaken. And so if it means flipping the retail over to the other side and bringing the town homes over to beside the assisted living facility, that's all within the documentation for us to do on final cycle. Those opportunities for us to adjust and address those things are all within these documents.
And I'm the only one that's brought that concern up, so I'm not asking for any change. I can't. I mean, that would be up to council.
But I do think it's interesting that we're split evenly, so it is somewhat of a hand grenade.
That was your big concern, wasn't it, Chris? Y'all looking at the facade of a building? What if they flipped it to the other side of the street?
He added additional buffer. My, my, that was a large concern of, uh, the white road residents, and, um, you know, the, the safety is, is my main concern. I think as we've seen in our community, I, I worry about an elderly person going over that bypass and somebody smacking him at forty-five miles an hour. It's gonna happen.
Yeah, somebody got smacked and keenfully on one that you weren't supposed to be going over four or five miles an hour, too.
That's my main hangup. There was a guy that got nailed changing his tire the other day.
One of the other things that has been pro- proposed as an amenity for this entire project is a shuttle service, where a resident could call for a shuttle and it'd be based out of the independent living facility. They could call for that shuttle service if they're on one side of the bypass and wanted to get to the other if there was some reason, a fear or that means for them to do that. All of the residents that are in the assisted, I mean, um, age restricted proportion of the project will be driving. They will have the ability to use their vehicles to go across the street. They just won't be going eight miles or five miles down the road to do what they need to do right next door.
Further questions, comments? Do we have any other, uh, folks that want to speak?
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have two more individuals. Um, one of the individuals, I, um, she does not, I explained to her, you know, how it was denied and, and more than likely this, you know, the fourth process, but I want her to stand it on the record so there, that, um, nobody, I have not influenced anyone tonight to speak.
I understand.
So she's just gonna come in, Ms. Frida Price, and she, she doesn't want to comment, but I just want to state that for the record. And then we have Carmen Hamilton.
Absolutely. Good call.
Okay. Frida Price again, and I just wanted to say thank you for listening to Concerns of Your Neighbors, and have a good evening. Thanks.
I don't want us to do that again.
Ms. Hamilton is coming.
Okay, thank you. Right here at the, at the band.
Over here, right here.
Yeah, thank you. We're just trying to keep everybody socially distant.
Um, thank you, and thank you for your time. I don't really think I have anything else to say that hasn't already been covered, although it's been kind of hard to hear. Um, I do want to apologize for my confusion. When, um, I signed up to speak, I didn't want to speak four times. I don't even want to speak one time. I don't enjoy this at all. Um, but I signed up for number four, um, when, you know, probably would have been better to get it all out, um, for number one, um, because now everything's been covered, but, um, my main concern towards the traffic, um, I think once the, when the D.R. Horton was in front of y'all, um, there was a big discussion about the traffic, uh, and the fact that we're never gonna get ahead, you know? Um, and even though this is a more attractive, you know, project where it's age restricted versus just the residential and the number of homes that's associated with the D.R. Horton project, you know, it's still, it's still gonna create traffic on our side of town, and it's already congested. And for me personally and my family, where we live, it's just gonna cause even more, you know, it's gonna be a snowball effect for where we live and just kind of sandwich the residents that live along the, the gravel portion of Pear Road and the paved portion of Pear Road that you see on the map. So everything that is, is happening and is gonna happen in that immediate area is gonna continue to affect us. And it's kind, I mean, nobody, I mean, we're kind of like obscure on those maps, you know, but we're still there. And I remember a couple of the planning commission members talking about the, um, when they were discussing amending the land use plan. They said they took a lot of time and effort and thought into that, the one that was just approved in December. So if they did, if they spent so much time, you know, um, on the designation, I understand that sometimes it's, you know, it's less the way it, it was, just because that's the way it's always been. But to me, I don't think that means, oh, let's go ahead and, you know, and change it just to fit this, you know, development we're considering. So I appreciate y'all giving that same consideration and designing that and all the decisions you've made here tonight. So thank you. And again, I want to apologize to Penelope, and, um, I do want to say too that she has been extremely helpful and generous with her time.
She's an extremely valuable member of our staff.
She is. She has been very timely responding to me and has taken a lot of extra time, even before PTO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further people wishing to speak? We'll close this public meeting. I now need a motion and a second for the first reading of new business item number four.
Make a motion to accept new business item number four.
I ran out of motion to accept, and a second. I can't imagine there being anything that needs to be discussed, but have at it.
Does county have water or sewer over there? Are all the residents over there, are they on well and septic? So if this developer decides to go to the county and have it rezoned and build it to them, then they can't do it because they don't have adequate water and sewer?
Questions? All right, uh, we have a motion to approve and a second on first reading item number four, development agreement request, Crossroads Development Partners. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Once again, a three-three vote. New business item number five, a resolution to appoint and commission Eric Werner, Warner, a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Fort Mill. Uh, this is Chipper Wilkinson. Is Chipper here tonight?
I think Chipper's on the line, but this is, Mary, this is similar to basically the same as the last meeting. Uh, we've got our, uh, Eric Warner is our, uh, fire marshal, and then the new business item number six, Semerel Beckham is our assistant fire marshal. So we're just, uh, providing them the opportunity to be, to enforce any codes and ordinances that pertain to the fire department.
Okay. I need a motion for this.
Make a motion to accept new business item number five.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. That's a unanimous vote. New business item number six, a resolution to appoint and commission Semerel Beckham, a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare, welfare for the town of Fort Mill. This is also Chipper. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I can ask a question.
No. You missed it.
Did we lose one of our, uh, fire marshals? Or we just turning it over, or we adding one?
No, we've, uh, this, we had some open positions. I took a lot of time from all the candidates, and we finally filled one for this.
Okay. I was just wondering. We've been commissioning so many lately.
Another for the utilities part.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew Chris, the one that.
There are no information discussion items listed, nor is there any executive session. However, uh, I'm gonna take the right and ability to say that I challenge each of you, uh, my teammates here on this council, to do a better job of discussing where we are and when we are. We have had ample opportunity to ask questions and to be informed and to make decisions. To have the types of decisions that we're making, they're of tremendous value. They don't warrant waiting. They don't warrant waiting until the night of. They don't. They warrant attention, they warrant everyone doing their research, and everyone doing their job as an elected official, and sharing what we need to resolve before the night of the meeting. So that's a challenge, as always. We had a lot of information flow on this event tonight, on this meeting, and I appreciate that, I really do. But information is worthless if you don't read it. Also had several calls and concerns expressed over the Fourth of July holiday in regards to fireworks. I've spoken with the police department, I've spoken with staff, and we are going to review our ordinance, which was written years ago, when the only fireworks in town were bottle rockets and penny firecrackers. We do not have that situation here today. There's a cross to look at between the noise ordinance and the ordinance for fireworks. So we will be taking a long, hard look at that, and hopefully we will write something that's more manageable, that will go, give deference to the people that like fireworks and peace to those that don't. We do not have enough staff members. If we deputized every employee, we don't have enough staff members to go door to door, street to street, and stop all of the fireworks. However, no one should ever trespass upon someone else's property and fire fireworks on someone else's property. That's ridiculous. So we need to pay attention to that. I noticed a lot of orange bags along the bypass. I am so grateful for those that take their time to clean our community and make it look better, especially when they're not the ones that threw it out the window.
That's true.
It is just, it's incredible the difference in the short period of time and the effort that's been extended to do that. So thanks to staff for spearheading that, keeping it going. Thanks to Jacana, Chris Sardelli, and those that worked so hard on the Fourth of July. I've had nothing but glorious comments on how wonderful it was to celebrate the Fourth of July in our small town in the evening. I think the evening celebration is very suitable because it's not as hot.
It turned out great.
Turned out wonderful. I think the farmer's market continues to exceed expectations and is serving our community. Trudy, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Just wanted to make one comment about what you was talking about. I had several people mention to me that they felt like that the cannon firing, that the overall festival for the Fourth of July, or the Fourth of July activities kind of overshadowed the cannon firing, and they were really looking forward to the cannon firing.
We did fire the cannons.
No, I know.
Both of them.
Yeah, so I think we'll take that into advisement, however, I think having something that's for everyone was very nice for the community as a whole. I do.
Chris Moody?
I'm good.
Ronnie?
I would say that the Fourth of July celebration, it was the first time in my lifetime I ever prayed and got cheered.
Please.
Cheers every time. No, I'm good, thank you.
Jamie?
I thought it was awesome, the Fourth of July, everybody in the family was, the only thing I'd like to add is a couple more speakers up Main Street, because I got tough to...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, too.
Hear everybody talking and have the music carry the rest of the way, and I like firing the cannons at nighttime. Watching the flash come out on is...
You don't get to see that in the day. You need to meet that on White Street, where people are gathering on that side.
I'm willing to concede and shoot them in the daytime if it was filled full of confetti.
Well, it was certainly, Trudy will remember, a lot more dramatic when we blew out the windows of Fort Mill times every Fourth of July.
Well, I think that part, I think that part of it, several people that spoke to me were saying that since they could not hear Davy reading about the cannon and all of that, the other activities were going on, and they wanted to hear you speak.
No, I'm saying, they were probably bored by the end.
No, they were not. No, they weren't. And, you know, folks that were not familiar with the history, you know, did not hear the history of the cannon firing.
So maybe when we are able to replace these streetlights and the electrical system, we had talked about ensuring that we have opportunities for speakers all up and down Main Street.
That would be good.
So maybe we can get a timeline on that sometime in the very near future.
We can, absolutely, Mary, we can address that in the upcoming budget.
Just because we're being recorded as well, I would like to thank Duke Power for changing the schedule on the planned outage in downtown Fort Mill that was to occur tomorrow, tomorrow during lunchtime. So I'm very grateful for the receptivity and the efforts on Duke Power's part to be accommodating and work around a time. I can't close out tonight without, it just seems like every, every meeting we're saying goodbye to someone. Fred Moore was a vital part of our fire department and our community. His passing is very sad to me and to all of us. I'm just really grateful. Again, we've had to say goodbye to so many, but I have to remind myself how lucky we were to have had them. So many communities you can live in and you don't know the people that were leaders and that were kind and that did everything they could for their community. We don't live in one. We know those people, and we've lost so many of them. So my heart goes out to Fred's family, as well as so many others that have passed in the last week. Second grade teachers, Sunday school teachers. We've just had just a heartbreaking year and a half going on two years. So just wanted to say thanks and appreciate all the efforts. If everybody else entertained a motion for adjournment.
Go, Mary.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you.